Let us stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call.
Guy.
Here.
Hurtel.
Here.
Hudson.
Ron Cohn.
Here.
Whitmer.
Here. Item number three.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Guy.
Yes.
Hurtel.
Yes.
Ron Cohn.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number four, superintendent's report.
Okay, I passed out, a lot of you have seen that some of the information on the new letter grades that the state is adopting. And, you know, this came out after our last board meeting, so I kinda wanted to give you a little bit of some background information on, you know, where we stand, what we're doing, where we are with that. We're looking at six different areas, standards met, performance index, value added, annual measurable objectives, or AMOs, four and five-year graduation rates. What you're typically used to seeing are the indicators. The performance indicators are part of what the standards are met. As you all well know, we did have one area in fifth grade math that we did not meet, which generally were in about the 90 percent area. So it was a significant drop, which was something that I know Mr. Buzzard and I have spent some time on, and now with the fifth grade over at Mrs. Scharshin's building, we're focused on trying to make sure that that certainly doesn't happen again. There could be a lot of reasons that those dropped. It can be the test, it can be the grade, it can be a number of things. It might not necessarily be the instruction where the instruction was consistent, but we certainly know that that fifth grade group is moving into a sixth grade area this year where we typically score almost near perfect, year in, year out. So I'm certainly confident that in those areas in the sixth grade, in all areas in the sixth grade where we're close to perfect, that that group will be met with the challenge as far as the teachers are concerned. But, letter grade there is 23 out of 24, indicators is an A, and generally puts us pretty close, and also I'm gonna be talking about performance index in the area of what we're used to seeing in terms of our excellent ratings. So if you look at performance index, the performance index measures the achievement of every student, not just whether or not they reach proficient. Schools receive points on every student's level of achievement. The higher the student's level, the more points the student applies towards its index. Our performance index this year was 103.3, a little bit lower than what we've had in the last couple of years, but it was the highest one in Columbiana County. Again, that's a pretty significant rating for us to know that where we're bringing our kids, and we've not dipped below the 100 mark since I've been here. Letter grade performance is calculated by dividing the number of points earned by basically 120, which is the possible number of points. And we ended up with an 86, which gave us a B. Value added, this starts to get into a great deal more of calculations, a great deal more in-depth of what the tests bring. We've seen value added over the years, it's kinda given us some areas to focus on. I know now that where our areas of focus come in terms of letter grades are going to be in those value-added areas. Basically, up on the slide, the data from the state test over multiple years that are examined through a series of calculations to produce a value-added designation for each school and district. The letter grades range in measures and progress components are the same as prescribed by law. So as by law, you'll look below, where we're used to seeing A, B, C, they've equated a plus two or higher as an A, greater two, plus one or less than plus two, a B, greater than or equal to a negative one but less than a plus one, a C, greater or equal to a negative two but less than negative one, a D, and then less than a negative two, an F. Okay, so I'm gonna go through a couple of areas. This is the grades that you saw on the paper, and these are the corresponding calculations, or the progress in the gain, the index that you can see based on reading and math scores. Obviously, the red scores are critical areas of focus for us. Yellow is basically in that middle ground, the light green is more equated with a B, and the dark green is an A. So we're looking at grade levels, and we're looking at different grades in terms of reading, math, and all tests, where we scored and where we have to focus. I know Mr. Buzzard's gonna talk a little bit, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, because I know in his principals' report, he's gonna go dive into the data a little bit. Gifted area, can see pretty solid C across. Students in the lowest 20 percent of achievement, that's essentially compared across the lowest 20 percent in the state, for statewide, for both reading and math, and we're a C in that area. Students with disabilities, once again, you're looking at reading and math, and in all tests, we're looking at a C. That's how that is calculated. So when you see the Cs in the paper, you can see there's kinda where our range is and what grade levels of what we're doing. So let's look at our district math, okay? Overall, district math, and when I told you that we dipped this last year, we dipped in the fifth grade math, you can see we went to negative 1.5. Well, our score was relatively lower to that, we were 74.6, not meeting that indicator. That wouldn't seem to be as bad as the 2011 score. But if you notice in the sixth grade, sixth grade consistently scores high, across the board, even in the other subject matters, but mathematics, very, very strong, sixth grade. And then obviously, that measurement carries over, because then they don't get the growth that they need necessarily in comparison to the next year in seventh grade. And then you look in the eighth grade, their growth has been pretty flat, for the most part, but if you can see this, last year was actually a B. But overall, on a three-year average, you can see what our grades look like, you know, a C, an A, an F, and a C. So again, you're getting a C in those areas because of what we're doing across the board. Reading, you look at the strengths of our reading, we can see the gaps pretty easily from this kinda document, and where some of our focus would be. Again, for the most part, we generally see strong, strong reading scores in fifth and sixth grade, and we took a dip in fifth and sixth grade this year. Overall, sixth grade over a three-year period is still B average. You're looking at Cs in the fifth and eighth grade, and the seventh grade, we're looking at really a filled area. So those are some areas that this is gonna help us determine some of the, at least focus on where we need to be, and then what Mr. Buzzard will be doing with his staff is honing in on individual students. You know, we need to do a better job of stretching some of our lower students and some of our top students. We've done a very, very good job over the years of really hitting that middle group, you know, making, getting proficient. Proficient has always been a real strong area for us, that was the goal, that's where we were, and we were very strong, you know, making sure of all of our kids are able to pass those tests. But getting them to gain and grow over the year is gonna be a real focus for us. Science scores, you can see fifth grade, fifth grade this, the last year in 2013 did take a dip, but we've essentially been really in that, in that B area for the most part, but we dropped pretty heavy last year, fifth grade across the board. And although not so bad in 2013, our eighth grade science scores definitely have been some of our lower scores over the past few years, and even reflects that in the indicators. So these are some, this is some data that I put in your board chair that you can, you know, pull over and take a little bit more time with, that I wanted to give you kind of a general overview of that. You know, our composite, for the most part, in terms of value added, kinda gives us our grades and where we are. That seventh grade has really taken, given us a dip over the past three years, so it's gonna be, certainly be a focus for us. Sixth grade has really pulled its weight, and sometimes when sixth grade does such a nice job pulling its weight, that growth makes it difficult for the growth ahead of it the next year. And that's partially why you see some of the way these scores go. But for the most part, if we can get those kids, once they get that growth in the sixth grade year, and take off and not just meet that proficient area, but grow our accelerated and advanced kids a lot higher, I think we can do a better job in terms of our value-added Annual measurable objectives, measures the academic performance of specific groups of students, such as racial and demographic groups. Each of these groups is compared against the collective performance of all students in Ohio. Key here is, not only we the only district in Columbiana County to get an A in this area, but you cannot get an A in this measure if one of your groups does not meet its goals. And, you know, I guess if there's, if there's an area of focus, it wouldn't necessarily be this, I think that I would tell you we're doing a nice job here. You know, that A doesn't necessarily pop out on the paper as anything specific to you, but if you, once you start looking into what does that represent, you get a better picture that, you know, we're really hitting all of our groups, and for us, two kids could be a subgroup, and then that subgroup could really be thrown completely off by one student. And so, you know, meeting the needs of some of those groups has been something that we've not done a poor job in, and if you look across this paper that was put out, you can see that other districts are really struggling in that area. We've done a nice job. Graduation rate, you know, this is, this is one of those areas that, you know, to get a B in it, you feel somewhat shameful in it, but know the politics around it. You know, the law changed, option 23 students that are special needs students have the ability to go on and continue their education to age 23. And now, those students now count against your graduation rate for a four- and five-year cohort. So you get into, you know, what's best for your kids. And the best thing for your kids isn't necessarily to worry about this graduation rate, it's to try to meet their needs. Unfortunately, there's a conflict there. We would've met the four-year graduation, we would've missed the five-year, based on those students, by a small, half a percentage point, somewhere around there, I think I calculated it was like a 94-point something or other, for the five-year. But, again, some of those students are passing our courses and not passing the OGT, so they can't graduate. So we might have them another year on our rolls in terms of not necessarily attending class, but they might, they might be on our rolls to take those tests again, going through some tutoring, some programs potentially that will help them pass those tests. Now, we can't make those students in that fifth year come back and do that. We encourage them to do that, because, one, it's good for them, they graduate, which we'll ultimately, we'll wanna see happen, so that they go off and have the opportunities that all of us have had. But secondly, that those kids can really make a decision to just not come. And we can't bring them back and say, "You have to do that." Those are some of the kids right now that we're probably having a tough time with, and I know Mr. Hostetler and I have had some serious conversation about it, I know he and I have talked about some of his own personal goals for this coming school year, and it's tied into graduation rate. Why? Because those, that's an area where both he and I feel very adamant that we wanna make sure our kids are coming through and graduating. Now, we can't, we can't get into that game of, we wanna have kids graduate that have opportunities because of their special education needs, to force them to step away and graduate in four years, which would increase our graduation rate. You know, we're still gonna do what's best for kids, and so long as the board understands that sometimes our graduation rate may look like a B, it's okay, I think, to get a B if we're doing what's right by our kids first. So, again, it's philosophical at some point in time, Board of Education may direct us to look differently, but at this point, you know, we're gonna stick with what we think's the best need at this point for kids, and if they want that option 23 to continue on, to go to the career center or go to other outside programs, we're gonna continue to do that. We'll get dinged on it if we get dinged on it. Future report card things to look for, K3 literacy improvement area, and I know Mrs. Scharshin with the third grade reading guarantee is focused in on those areas. I'm very confident in not only her ability, but her staff's ability to make sure kids are on target. You know, I'd tell the high school principals and the middle school principals, the foundation of what we do comes from that elementary school. If they're ready to go by the time they hit middle school, the middle school's able to take them and grow them from there. And the same thing happens in high school. The middle school has its job to do. And if all the parts are working together, I don't think we're gonna have issues with high school kids getting what they need to be successful. So then you move into the next area, which is prepared for success. And if you look at this, this is a component that measures six areas that don't technically receive a grade, but it will be reported on the report card, is how we're doing it. Part of those measures are college admission tests, dual enrollment credits, industry credentials, honors diplomas awarded, advanced placement classes and courses, and really, advanced placement, meaning they score three or better on the advanced placement test, and international baccalaureate program. You know, so, so the high school has their work cut out for them in thinking about what's coming in the near future. This is what's gonna happen here relatively soon, we're gonna be looking at that, and there are timelines on the report card for those to begin showing up. So, again, you know this is gonna happen, and I know Katie walked out, Katie's with the Journal, but this is gonna happen, they're gonna put these in there, not necessarily Katie, but they're gonna compare us. Are they fair comparisons? And it just depends on what area you're in, and what district you're in, and what you're faced with, and what different opportunities are available to your kids and not others. You know, I think some of the programs that we have in place are really gonna allow us to blossom with some of these things, but we're gonna dive down deeper into the data and hopefully be able to get those value-added scores to reflect where we think we should be. We certainly are not satisfied with a rating of C, and I don't think any of our staff would tell you they were with anywhere in any one of our categories, but we certainly know, we knew from before, we had areas that we could improve in, and now, you know, as the papers begin to put these out and compare us and contrast us with other districts, now the focus which is that much greater that we can hone in on our improvement areas. So, that's in a nutshell, the new report card, and I know that there's way, way more to this. We could probably, you can probably go to seminars across the state to spend hours diving into this data, and I know that value added is gonna be something we're gonna be really focusing in on. Any questions, some concerns? I know some of that data's there in board chair for you to pull up if, if you wanna dive into a little bit more, I can certainly, Mr. Buzzard and I both can, Mr. Buzzard is our test coordinator, and we can get you additional information, and, you know, we take all the help we can get, I think, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is nutrition and support, and I believe she said she was unable to be with us today. Item number six, principals' reports.
I'll start for Joshua Dixon, now reporting in board chair, September 8th letter. Under curriculum and professional development, I mentioned at the last board meeting that I gave a survey in the spring as part of our race to the top requirements, but I collected data on professional development needs in the classroom, and will be continuing our curriculum mapping, aligning assessments with, because of student growth measures and SLOs, teachers having to implement those things to show student growth, we'll be focusing on that as well, including a makeover for our current standards-based report card to align more with the common core now that K5 has implemented them. All professional development will be supported by Mahoney County ESC teacher leaders again this year, and Mr. Book already mentioned some of the value-added, some of the things that I had already indicated in here is, in addition to analyzing value-added data, the fourth and fifth grade staff, I printed out an educational practice reflective survey off Batel for Kids portal, where I really, I wanted the teachers to be really honest with themselves, so I have asked them to take it, but they don't have to share with me unless they want to. But it asks things like the time on task in your classroom, if your planning takes you all the way to the bell, you know, things like that, that are, bottom line, they're getting to, are the teachers using best practice strategies in the classroom and exploring effective teaching strategies. They'll continue to create learning targets and setting individual student goals, like Mr. Mook mentioned, you can go into that value-added data and through linkage, actually look at each student that was linked to a teacher, the percentage of time they were linked to the teacher. And one of our goals are, our focus will be on students with disabilities. We fell in that area, I'm not sure why, but one of the things that we already started to do with our response intervention this year is, Mrs. Vogelberger's going to take over our IAT process. We've met with each grade level, because each grade level we felt looks different in the data they bring to the table about individual kids. And I know teachers are doing it, good teachers automatically do it, they don't always document it. So the key for us is, for you to come to a meeting with a student that is struggling, we need decision-making data. And really, numbers don't lie, and graphs, and if you can get some baseline data, show us where the student is, where you need to take them, but the most important thing is what's happening in between there. What are you doing to intervene for them? Like Mr. Mook said, when a grade level comes in high, like third grade, they did so high in reading, so high in math, when they come in high, and that fourth grade teacher has to take them even higher, that's more of a difficult task. And I know my fourth grade math teacher took this very personally, held herself accountable, was extremely, you know, what am I gonna do, what am I gonna do? And within this value-added things, you can click to the next page and see, we do focus on the middle, we do focus on the lower end, and we intervene like crazy. We forget about that enrichment piece for those kids who come in already knowing what they need to know, and we need to take them one step further. So we're gonna start looking at things like that in fourth and fifth grade. We're gonna continue at literacy collaborative. Under student achievement, kindergarten kids took the crawl. Mr. Mook mentioned the third grade reading guarantee, that's Senate Bill 316, and right now, the county on Friday put out a recommendation to districts that did not purchase vendor assessments, which I did not, except for math, because we didn't have a lot of, a progress monitoring tool for math. We did purchase Renaissance Learning Star Math this year. So we are going to use the Ohio Diagnostic Assessment, the screening tool, and we're gonna work out some details on getting all the kids, we have to get them all tested by September 30th. Mandy Moore and Karen Visengardi under health and wellness are entering Dixon in the Get Fit, Get Active, Get Fit Challenge, and Mandy Moore's also working with the Columbiana County Cash Coalition on the Bonnie Hopple School Health Mini Grant. We're going to try to go for getting backpacks and food to send home with our free and reduced lunch kids for over the weekend, when things that they can make in the microwave, things that they can make quick. I put some upcoming events there for you. I didn't want fifth grade to feel left out, because they weren't over here at Southside Middle School, so I am gonna have Officer Booley come there and continue to do the DARE program with them, so that will begin. Fall, OAA's for third grade, it's October 8th, and with having K2 and 3.5, we'll be doing pitcher day, two days this year, instead of just one day, so that's there. Special thanks, Rob Miles, I know everybody remembers Julianne Miles, our guidance counselor that passed away. Her husband for the past, I don't know, maybe three to five years, has made us a donation to Joshua Dixon for character education and anti-bullying resources, so thank you to him. And I'd like to thank the Rotary, they made a generous donation for me to purchase school supplies for some kids that needed it. And that's my report.
Southside Middle School Good News Report. We're off to a very good start considering that we closed down two hallways and relocated to the high school. I'd like to just acknowledge what a great job all the classified has done. Teachers, some teachers were relocated to new rooms, and they've done a great job, but a lot of the changes, the classified people really come through, Mr. Moreno and his work crew doing all the moving of items and revamping things, did a super job, had everything ready, and just like to acknowledge them first. Also, we've got, we have new bus entrances and exit routes, they've gone off without any hitches. New morning reporting and breakfast procedures, the cooks have done a great job of making sure that the middle school kids are able to get their breakfast, and the high school kids are able to get their breakfast. The middle school students are going into the auditorium in the morning, we can try to keep a little separation between the two buildings. We've been able to work that out with Mr. Hostetler's cooperation. Our lunch procedures, we're eating over here in the high school cafeteria. Our schedules have worked out beautifully, the cafeteria people have had food for all four, I have a group of kids eat, then high school eats, and then I eat again, and no hitches there, everyone's been able to get their lunches. We have a new classroom layout with our sixth grade having a top corner floor, trying to separate them. Once again, Mr. Moreno had all those rooms ready, we moved the technology, we have a new computer lab up in that area, no hitches so far, great job there. We have a new teacher workroom, Mr. Moreno and his crew had to run a lot of electricity and get a new workroom because of the closing of the building, the teachers did lose their workroom, and also moving around some scheduling. And we're really gonna work a lot with this sixth grade group that didn't do as well testing as we would've liked to have them to have done, and we've put in for them a nine-week character ed course, where they're just, when we're talking about going through middle school and growing up and that type of thing, so we're gonna try to work a little bit with their attitude throughout the year. Athletics, I always give you reports about fielding teams and our squads, you know, our participation, our volleyball squads are full, we have, we had a good turnout for volleyball, cheerleaders full squad. Football program, we are light at seventh grade, I think we only have 11, 12 kids at the seventh grade level, which unfortunately, we're playing, we play our eighth grade game, and we've only been playing a quarter for the eighth grade, or for the seventh grade, because we just don't have that many kids to field a team and play a whole game. Of course, you know, you know, it takes 11 players to play football, and we have some kids that are more running backs, they're playing line just so we can get a team, so I, you know, I'm always disappointed whenever we can't field a full team, so we are a little short in seventh grade football. Mr. Mook did a great job talking about the testing. Mrs. Scharshin stole a little bit of my thunder too, a couple of things she said, but just noting our testing. In achievement area, I have Columbiana, it's Southside Middle School, you know, as far as achievement, we do a great job. We've been prepared to do well on achievements every year. We've actually missed having a perfect score on our achievement part by one student, one more student would've passed in fifth grade math, we'd have a perfect score, and, you know, now's the time to make improvements for this year, but as Mr. Mook did point out, we have a couple of scores that other schools would really like to have in some areas, but those scores are gone, we're looking for this year. So, as far as achievement, our performance index is outstanding, some of the work that we've done with our small groups of students are outstanding. we've done with our small groups of students are outstanding. Getting to the value-added, there's a prediction piece that we have that's looking at our students and charting where they're going. In math for Southside Middle School, we have 63% of our students that are on target to pass the next test, just basically showing up from school. We have 23% that need some focus, we need to make sure that they're on, they're in line, doing what they need to do, doing well on their tests. So you add that together, that on this next batch of tests, our math students in the 6th, 7th, 8th grade, the state's predicting that we'll have an 86% passing rate, which is, which is where we want to be. But we don't want to forget about the 14% that they say right now, unless we do strong intervention, will not pass. So this is the kind of data and information we're hitting back, it's just trends, it just sees where kids are going. So that's our, that's the prediction in math. In reading, they're predicting that we have 71% of our students aren't target to pass, and 20% need some focus, but should pass, we're over 90, we're to 91%, is what they're saying that Southside Middle School should do in math. And we have a 9% that need intervention. And once again, we have small classes, you know, we have less than 100, so when you're talking 9% of 75, you're talking 5 of 6 kids. So they were playing these numbers games here, but, you know, we're doing a pretty good job of having these kids lined up to do well. You already know red is the bad color, and we have areas identified in red, that's students that do not, that do not demonstrate the year's growth. I don't know whether Mr. Mook mentioned it, that, you know, it seems hard to understand, but a year's growth is a zero on that chart. The zero is, Dave was, Dave was here going into the 7th grade, and he leaves the same place. I didn't change, I didn't go up or down, I grew exactly one year in one year's time. So that's also probably a C, we don't like Cs. But just when you're reading those charts, if you look at that, a zero is a perfect one year's growth for the students. When you get down to less than a year's growth, that is below the negative one, that's where you get to the reds. And 7th grade, we did not do well. Once again, I think it's been explained twice, it's more difficult to do well when the year before does so well, because, you know, they go from here to here, they expect that to keep going. You know, so if you go to here and you level off, now you're looking, now you're looking bad. But that's the game we play, that's what's set before us, and I think both, Mr. Mook and Kim both said, that the challenge is to keep going what's been done. So we have red in 7th grade, math and language arts, and that's going to be a focus, that we're going to try to not have red this year, and our 8th grade science has red, which we're...
On our numbers in 7th grade, percentage-wise, we have nothing in the 80s in 7th grade and in the 90s in our percentage pass.
Oh, our pass, yes.
You know, so when you look at our indicators, we're skyrocketing, and that's what, you know, Mr. Buzzard for some of these other districts would love to see, the numbers of kids that are passing our tests, that are doing well. But the problem is, is we didn't stretch them beyond that year's growth because they grew so much the year before that, you know, man, well, that's where we're going to have to take the ball and run with it. And again, the C isn't bad, but, but that's not what, that's not what the public looks at.
And then just to find the, Mr. Mook, the beautiful job leading into my final part, then we can break, then we can break it down one more time to each individual teacher. We break the students down into five levels, from our lowest achieving, low middle, middle, high middle, and high. And you can see where teachers do well with certain types of kids. And if you want to, you know, take a look at that, you can see that, you know, you're doing, and to be honest, a school like Columbia County, some of our neighboring schools that have done really well the past years, you know, you can sit down and probably, probably take a guess, the students that they do really well with, and that's our middle kids, because that's where most kids are in the middle, and we get them all, you know, we pass them. And some of the other schools like us that are struggling, as Kim said, and I think as Mr. Mook said, we've got to get these high kids at year's growth, because they're going to pass the test, they're going to pass the test. But are we, are we taking them to where they need to be? And we did well with some of our, with our groups for our lower achieving kids, but we definitely need to bring them up to speed. So that's a very, each teacher gets their own report on how they did with certain groups of kids. And, you know, it's an eye, it's an eye-opening experience for them that, you know, out of these four quintiles, you know, these, these three did well. Low to middle, I did well, boy, I had two groups, you know, they passed the test, but they didn't, they didn't grow. So it's a whole nother, it's a whole nother area to work with. I didn't get it on here because I just got this this afternoon, but we, Southside Middle School's 6th grade math and 8th grade math got chosen for, to do a field test for the park. This will be our last year of regular testing, and next year we go to a computerized test. So we had, we had chosen to do a 6th grade field test for 6th grade math and 8th grade math, for the, it's called a park assessment, which will help us tremendously. It'll give our kids a chance to see what the new tests are going to look like, and it also gives our teachers a chance to see what they're up against. I've already talked to Mrs. Misos in our, in our tech period, and part of her walking orders this year is to find out everything she can about park and prepare our kids as much for the, for the, for the computerized test as possible. And she's already got back to me that she's done some research on that. So it'll be a challenge. Hopefully that's, you know, we have a veteran staff, although we are getting younger, you know, hopefully this kind of thing invigorates you, you know, the fact that, yeah, I had this down, how to be successful with this, you know, with this challenge. Now we have a whole new challenge, you know, can you teach an old dog new tricks, basically? We're going to support the old dogs as much as we can, so they do well. So I'm, you know, sometimes I'm confident, sometimes I'm not, I'm very confident about this year. I know where our pockets, our need is, Mr. Mook already said it, we have a great 6th grade teaching staff, they always do very well. You know, we have a group coming into them that, that we were a little disappointed with their results, so I'm pretty positive that we'll, and, I mean, if that group didn't do well this year, if the scores were here, it's a lot easier to get growth. So that's the game that we're all going to, in two or three years, everyone's going to see, wow, you did really well, well, it's because the year before we didn't. So, but I think everybody wants to be up here the whole time. Didn't mean to, didn't mean to talk that much, but this is, this is going to be, this will be interesting, how we, how we address this and meet the challenge, what's this? Okay.
Okay. High school reporter. Under academics and curriculum, we've got some exciting things going on. This will be our first year, we're piloting a totally online class in personal finance, it's very exciting for us. Our goal is to, for every Columbia County high school graduate to graduate taking an online class, because we see that as, you know, using that in the future when they go to college and future trainings on, online and things like that. So I want to thank Mr. Martin and Mrs. Misos, they've been tremendous help with that. As Mr. Mook pointed out, we have several goals at high school, pointing to the new report cards, to increase our graduation rate, which right now is 90.3, and to improve our performance index, although it was one of the highest in the area, is 103.5, that is one of our goals, to get to that 110 mark. The, I guess the overall arching theme would be to, to enhance our, advance and accelerate students while providing support for at-risk students. So a couple of things that we're putting in place, we expanded the schedule this year, that'll give us a chance for intervention classes and credit recovery. Our intervention classes this year include OGT prep, math, and English intervention, and that's for at-risk students and students with disabilities. We're also looking at enhancement of our AP program. This year we had a nice increase in the number of students taking AP courses, we want to continue that trend, we've been working with an ODE rep, we received a $10,000 grant to expand our AP programs. Mr. Martin is in the process of working with our AP teachers to design an AP page on the ClipperNet, and tomorrow morning, I'm going to meet with the AP committee, we'll be looking at drafting a mission statement and comprehensive policies towards the expansion of our AP program. Under student events, senior night will be this Friday night, and we are auditioning for our new fall play, this will be the first time that we have a fall play, it's arsenic and old lace, and we're looking for November showtime, so. Mrs. Ferguson extended an invitation, and I'll be sure to include more information about that coming down the line. Under guidance, Ms. Waller's going to speak to you tonight.
Couple updates going on. We are through with the scheduling process, I think, all the scheduling changes the first couple of weeks, so that's a good feeling, I hope we're done with that. Senior credit checks and class visits, I actually did today, and just going over transcripts with them, going over the college application process. We have free online ACT prep through Youngstown State University, and it's, this is maybe the second or third year, but we had a ton take advantage of that this year, so I'm excited about that. October 2nd, we're planning to take all the seniors to Kent State for College Fair, possibly juniors or some juniors, so that'll be some good exposure for them to meet with some representatives. We have college application day planned for November 15. This is, there's about 20 different colleges that waive their application fee if students apply on that day. So we bring all them, all the seniors that want to apply to those 20 schools down to the computer lab, and they'll do the online applications there. We have about 20 college reps scheduled, some career and technical schools, I think every branch of the military, so they'll be coming in, we have a whole calendar, and we do announcements, reminders, just trying to get them engaged in that process early to start planning for college now. Some of them wait a little bit later in the year, and it gets a little stressful for them, so just trying to encourage them to do two college applications by Thanksgiving break, that's my goal for them. We have OGTs coming up for, fall OGTs, juniors and seniors, that either had not passed or are new to Ohio, so they have to take all five parts. We have about 25 students who are testing, they're not taking every part, some of them are just taking one or two. So I'll be proctoring those tests. We also are offering the PSAT, which is the preliminary SAT, it's like a practice SAT, to all 10th graders under a grant. So that, along with giving them exposure to that type of test and sort of gauging them academically, there's a big career and college piece that comes with that, with their results. So once we get their results in, we can get them logged into, to some things on College Board, and so that's 10th grade, so I think that'll help with the college and career piece too. I'll be working on freshmen through junior class visits and targeting different things that are pertinent to them. There's a couple of new groups that we're starting up, I have an intern from Kent State University, guidance counseling intern, we're looking at doing, we had quite a few new students to the district, like open enrolled or just moved into the district, so we were actually able to form, since they had kind of had like a common study hall or time where we could meet with them, to sort of do a group for them, like a, you know, new to the school kind of thing, introductory, getting them acclimated, making sure that transition's going well. So I think that'll be good. And then also, another group of students sort of at-risk academically, maybe some other social behavioral things, so trying to work with them a little bit in a small group. Peer tutoring, I think I might have mentioned it in a meeting past, but we do have a peer tutoring program, and I've, I've talked to some parents about it, like freshman orientation, new student orientation. We had a good response so far this year of students signing up to be tutors. Not everybody signed up to want a tutor quite yet, but I think that'll come along as interims and things come out in parents, but we do have a strong base of students willing to tutor, so that'll be a good program this year, I think. And then lastly, we had eight students that were nominated, selected, did an application and an essay, and chosen to do. The Akron Children's Hospital has a teen mentor volunteer program, so they'll go to monthly meetings where they'll be mentored, but they also will do volunteer work for Akron Children's Hospital, so hopefully some exposure for students interested in working with children, interested in medical fields, and so that's what's on the horizon in guidance. Thank you.
Under students community, Mrs. Prindles, multiple handicaps class, took a recent trip to the street fair, said she had a great time. NHS is selling Volley for the Cure t-shirts, so if you need your Volley for the Cure shirt, you can pick that up with NHS member. I want to say thank you to our student volunteers who helped this recent Sunday with our alumni dinner, they did a great job, got good reports. Under athletics, boys soccer is off to a very good start, they are currently 3-2-1 overall, three undefeated in ITCL, 3-0-1. Girls soccer is undefeated, they are 4-0 right now, 2-0 in the league. Girls golf is unbelievable, they are currently undefeated, 10-0. Boys golf is 8-3, very good record. Volleyball is currently 5-1 with a 3-0 ITCL record. Football is 0-2, but we had those two one-point losses, so a couple heartbreakers for our football team. Coast Country is right now competing out back, they're hosting a meet tonight with 15 teams, and the cheerleaders are doing a good job prepping for Friday's first pep rally. Upcoming events, of course, senior night will be this Friday, school pitchers on the 17th, and then homecoming on, the homecoming night will be 4th, and dance will be the 5th. Thank you very much.
Item number seven is public input, I don't have anything on that. I think we went through for go. Item number eight. Item number nine.
I'd like to do consent agenda for items nine, 334. I'll second that.
Question? Call the roll.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 35, President's Report. On that note, since we consent agenda, I'd like to welcome Ms. Brooke Hitchcock to the district as an LPN, to one of our new hires, and, that we hired tonight, and also all the other new employees that aren't here, we welcome them all to the district. The other thing I wanted to say was, there's lots of excitement in the fall activities, and I know I have kids in the district, and, you know, we're all run in different ways, but we seem to be all picked off good, and our teachers have all got the students in the classrooms, and everything seems to be working very well. And with regards to the report cards, I'd like to say, with all things, we have challenges that comes with new things, and, but I'm confident in our administrators, our teachers, that we will meet them. So, thank you. Item number 36, again, OSBA Legislative Liaison Report. With the new report cards, the one thing I noticed when I was reading my report was that less charter schools reached the high marks. 319 of traditional districts reached A's compared to the 18 charter schools in Ohio. I thought that was an interesting fact. And the other thing was budget cuts across the state, and the country actually nationwide, are forcing nearly 3,000 Ohio kids from the Head Start program. And nationwide, more than 57,000 kids are losing access to that program. So the cuts are reducing employees, and unfortunately, as we all know, they lose their jobs also. Mr. Hostecker had mentioned the financial literacy program, which I was, was excited because Ohio is above average in leading the financial literacy education program across the country, so, and I do believe that's in part to us requiring that with our instruction for K through 12. That's my report. And item number 38 is Mark, and he's not here. So item number 39, date of next board meeting is to... So item number 39, date of the next board meeting is Tuesday, October 8, 2013, at 6:30 PM in the High School Media Center. And item 40.
I have to make a motion to consider executive session for the compensation of employee to review negotiations and for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law rules or state statutes as defined by FERC 121.22.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Hurdle.
Yes.
Guy.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes. We are in executive session.